At 6:37, I will call the Regional School Committee to order. Yes, my green light's on. Okay. So our first item is entering into executive session, but I see that there is some public here. If the committee is okay, if we can switch those and move public comment to first. Okay. So if there are any members of the public that wanted to come up and make a three-minute statement, we can start there? Just, you can make it so.
Bush, there we go. Hi, my name's Chris Hockman, resident of Palom. I came for previous meetings. Noted earlier today, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Noticed earlier today that the meeting was scheduled for in the high school library. Checked before I went and saw I'd be going to the wrong place if I did go there. Thought, oh, there must have been an emergency of some kind to cause the change of venue within 48 hours without a public notice prior to that. So if this is not an exchange, I know, but if possible, could you explain to the public the need for the change of venue? That's it, thank you.
Yes, that is a very easy question. The heat in the library isn't working. So as soon as we knew it wasn't going to work there, there should be a note that is on the high school door. And as soon, it was also updated on board docs as soon as the decision was made. And then I also believe it was on the town websites about meetings. Okay, so. Yes, come on, come up.
The statement I made to town council on December 2nd in terms of, well, I believe that just from an outside viewpoint, the way to handle the situation with the field that the managers for three years had concealed certain lessons and were intent on using them only as a foundation. And a plan which drew the ire of half of the, you know, the council to the president, had to be, was not a draw. So single voice. And so I will want to present to the, to the school community, not a thought about how the school that could be compensated for three years of continually various challenges and parting circumstances. And I think that some conversation is necessary to make up for these damage that has been done to the schools by the continuing failure to appropriate the necessary resources for the school.
Excellent timing, thank you very much. Okay. Any other members of the public? I mean, it sounds. Ooh, hold on, we're having a problem. It's playing back today's meeting. Okay, pause. I think something happened, like it's. We're good now? Okay. Okay. Did you want to come and make a public comment? Perfect, excellent, please join us for three minutes, thank you. Sorry about that.
I live at 30 Harris Street, and I am an ESL bilingual educator in the Common Ethics New Language Program at Fort River, Illinois. As a public school educator, my goal is to build a safe and welcoming environment for all students, parents, caretakers, regardless of their immigration status. Without Trump's second presidential platform threatening to deport the people who live in the country, here, a public school in Massachusetts needs to be prepared to advocate for everyone. During Trump's last administration, some schools in Massachusetts were frequented by immigration and customs enforcement ICE agents as they sought to detain undocumented parents and mother's children. This time around, ICE agents could be much more involved, given the rhetoric that Trump had since moved to demand entry into our school. As a local educator working with immigrant students and their families, I appreciate Amherst's reaffirmation of the December 2019 decision to be a sanctuary city and not perform the functions of immigration office. Yet Massachusetts public schools will need to prepare a plan of action to empower educators, students, and families with their inalienable rights if they were to encounter ICE officials and immigrants. Katie Richardson, the multi-cultural, multi-limbo education administrator of the public schools of Amherst, and I were fortunate to connect with an immigration-related, biholean-safely nonprofit organization called M-School, like I-M-M-School, that partners with educators and community leaders from shared schools or safe and inclusive spaces for immigrants and families. After having an initial conversation with M-School, our next steps are to discuss this opportunity with other districts and building leaders to determine what participation would be possible. I'm sure it is moving out today, so you are aware and can help support this work as we move forward. What makes M-School unique is that it is exclusively informed, guided, and facilitated by current and former immigrant educators, students, and parents. By elevating their leadership as true experts, they work in the intersection of education and immigration. Through this unique approach, their team translates the complexity of immigration experiences into effective and clear and research-based programming that aids to make your change within school.
Sure.
Our hope is that people are able to partner with M-School in this initial training, which they have generously offered to provide for a fraction of their market price. If we can afford it with our budget, Palom Regional School Committee would like, hopefully, for them to be able to find the means to sustain future funding during this new presidential term. Thank you for your timely consideration, this important part of the agreement.
Thank you. Okay.
Point of order, thank you. Can I just ask that we have another public comment period after our executive session because of the location change and because the way it's listed on the agenda? Thank you.
Yep, okay. So. The Amherst Palom Regional School Committee will now consider entering executive session in accordance with open meeting law, MGLC 30A, Section 21A, to conduct collective bargaining sessions, Amherst Palom Education Association, APEA, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares. And I do declare with the intent to return to open session.
Second.
Deb? Sarah?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Bridgette?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
William?
Yes.
Sarvas? Yes. Erv?
Yes.
Philman?
Yes.
And Anna?
Yes.
Okay, so we are in executive session, and we will be back shortly. Over there. Yeah.
To everyone who's watching on TV, we were adjusting technology for an upcoming presentation. At this time, the school committee is in executive session and they will come back into normal session shortly.
Okay. Number two. Get there. That's the.
I just wanted to say regarding the change of location of the meeting, I just want to say publicly that it's not a violation of open meeting law to change the location of a meeting with less than 48 hours notice for reasons such as facility issues, facilities issues like we had with the problem with the heat in the high school. You what public bodies are permitted to change location as long as you like put a sign at the original location so that people know what the new location is. Thank you.
Irv, did you have your hand up?
My hand up and this is the one that makes sure and public announcement that this is will be my last in-person meeting until April. And that as has happened before, I will be virtual from that point. From after this meeting, I will be virtual until the April meeting.
Okay, thank you. So I'm also going to ask that you like stick your hand up. I can't see everybody. I apologize if I don't call on you. Okay, any further? Yeah, bridge it. Good.
I just quickly wanted to mention that the School Equity Advisory Committee meets tomorrow evening at 6:30. It is scheduled to be in the high school library. So if you're planning to attend, please be aware that we may have a change in venue. If it will it be fixed by tomorrow? Oh, excellent. Okay, so at the high school library and parents, school staff and community members interested in equity in our schools are all invited.
Anything further? Oh, and just an announcement from the APEA negotiating subcommittee, we have had our very.
We had a great conversation, and we all agreed to take the discussion up again in January, so it can, future MOUs can be wrapped up in in time for FY twenty six budgeting. I have been working to create operating protocols and an annual agenda for the committee's consideration at hopefully a joint retreat, which I had mentioned to the, my other chairs sometime, to be scheduled sometime in January, and we'll work together to get that scheduled. And then finally, we will be scheduling another meeting to jump on the Amherst meeting next week. Going through to create the annual agenda, I came across a few things that we need to wrap up before the end of the year, which will be the twenty five, twenty six calendar here, any sabbatical request, any new potential courses for the high school. So hopefully for the region, it won't be too long, and I'll work on getting that all sorted for next week. All right. That is all. Any school committee announcement or subcommittee updates?
I just wanted to say regarding the change of location of the meeting, I just wanted to say publicly that it's not a violation of open meeting law to change the location of a meeting with less than forty eight hours notice for reasons such as facility issues, facilities issues like we had with the problem with the heat in the high school. Public bodies are permitted to change location as long as you like put a sign at the original location so that people know what the new location is. Thank you.
Irv, did you have your hand up?
My hand up, and this, just wanted to make sure and public announcement that this is will be my last in-person meeting until April. And that, as has happened before, I will be virtual from that point. After this meeting, I will be virtual until the April meeting.
Okay. Thank you. So I'm also going to ask that you like stick your, I can't see everybody. I apologize if I don't call on you. Okay. Any further, yeah, bridge it.
I just quickly wanted to mention that the School Equity Advisory Committee meets tomorrow evening at six thirty. It is scheduled to be in the high school library, so if you're planning to attend, please be aware that we may have a change in venue. If they, will it be fixed by tomorrow? Oh, excellent. Okay, so at the high school library and parents, school staff, and community members interested in equity in our schools are all invited.
Anything further? Oh, and just an announcement from the A P E A negotiating subcommittee, we have had our very first meeting, we have decided to work in with I B V interest-based bargaining, and we will keep you updated. All right. Superintendent's update.
All right, good night, everyone. Go ahead and to the next one, Nibby. As always, I want to refocus us on our district priorities, student safety and well-being, healing and stabilization of the district, and data and accountability for equity. And they remain three top priorities for this year. And so, you know, we're going, so I'll get to talk about some key highlights and keeping it student-centered and very short because I think the next two presentations after this, it's all me talking, then I'll use your mic. So winter sports, tryouts and everything have begun, whether it's basketball. I know Alpine Ski has a trip coming up, so the winter sports and winter sports tryouts have have begun. And I'd like to thank our athletic director, Victoria, and her assistant, Georgia, for the hard work that they do with all of the coaches. I know that in preparation for winter sports, they invited Tanya McIntyre to come in and do an equity training for all of the coaches to talk about what does that look like? And they were able to delve into different scenarios, real-world scenarios that happen at different sports games to talk about how do you address that as the coach? What does that look like? Because sometimes in athletics, because of the, not just, I'm not going to say sportsmanship, but because of the familiarity, we often forget that there's a line or boundary that may be crossed, and we may overlook it. So it was very, very great that, you know, Victoria worked with Tanya to have that training for all of the winter sport coaches, and I think that it's one that they're going to continue for all of the coaches moving forward. So I wanted to make sure that that was stated. My first snow day, December fifth, and I survived. It was really, really great to to work with the, just being a new superintendent in a new area and having the opportunity to work with the other superintendents around, it has been really, really great. It wasn't my first time in snow, it's the most snow that I've seen in a very long time. But I think the adrenaline, everything that happened that morning, I have to thank my team, Rupert, Mike, Jerry, Seth, Jen, Nibby, Megan, just being up at four AM with me, making sure we already had our messages crafted from the day before. So everything was already prepped. We had to walk through different options. I have to thank, and I have their names, the DPW guys from, and lady. So I have Amy from Amherst, I have Doug from, hold on, I think Doug is from Schutzbury, or Dave is from Schutzbury. Dave is from Schutzbury, I have Matt, and I have one more person, and I'm going to forget their name, Rick. And so they were all really, really responsive, very timely. When we made the initial first to our call, it was, you know, once, this is at four AM, and all four of them, you know, were responsive, and it's like, we think we can make it if the snow slows down. But again, what I learned quickly and the first advice I got was the fact that I have to be able to take into consideration the higher elevation of our hill towns. And for a lot of it, the hill towns drive what happens, and they drove what happened here, including Pelham. And so three out of the four towns would not have made it in time. And something in my gut said, double back around eight o'clock, just double back. And I did, and when I doubled back, the three out of four, we weren't, we weren't going to make it safely. And so we just agreed to make that call, and I switched to a full closure. Nibby and Compliance is tracking our days and what happened so that at the end, we can go back and see what occurred. But it was really great just to see the level of collaboration and support, and not just internally, but externally from everyone, just to make sure our children made it safely to school. So we did debrief as a district team and talk about what we could have done better next time, what we can do better next time, how quickly we respond. I'm going to publicly ask all parents to please update your information and sign on to Parent Square. I think that we have this resource, this tool to quickly get information out to you. I laughed at myself when I heard my recording because that was a real morning voice. It was not anything else but that. But, you know, we have the tool, we use it, let's make sure that parents sign up. So I'm asking all parents to make sure that you're signing up to Parent Square, you monitor our Facebook, our social media pages, because we immediately sent out everything that way. So first snow day down in the books? Yes, and done. All right, celebrating community, and so this is, every month, we have a theme, and this month's theme is community for December. American Education Week, Sarah Best talked about Lena, and that's Lena and her dad there in the picture. And we really appreciated Lena, I think, for a young individual in middle school to think about what it is she wants. And when I asked them to craft their priorities, one of her main priorities was the social emotional wellness of the staff and the students. And so just prepping and giving them the opportunity to meet, and I have to, again, I'm going to thank each chair at their meetings, but thank you to the chairs for coming out and just spending time with their future leaders. Last week, I received an email from a, one of our drivers, Thomas, saying, hey, Dr. Z, come join me on on the van as we pick up and just see what it is. And I was like, okay, I'll go. I was supposed to go tomorrow on Wednesday, but since Tuesday freed up for me, I went today. And it was a great experience to ride along, and guess where I went? Leverett and Schutzbury. So I had a great time. I saw some parents and some kids who came on the bus, and one parent was like, aren't you the superintendent? I was like, yeah, good morning. And it's, it was a really great experience, and, you know, I thank Thomas for reaching out and sending that email. Thank you to Janelle, who also was on the bus and just shared their experiences in the district, and to the students who rode the bus and were like, who's this other adult? And then more so for them, for even one of them came on, and they were like, good morning, and then they, the joy, they were like, wait a minute, you're our superintendent, what are you doing on our bus? And I was like, you know who I am, like, and another, you know, student was like, you're in our school all the time. So it, it helped to ground me in the fact of why I do the work that I do. And I told Thomas, so please let the other drivers know if they ever want me to ride along, I don't mind taking some time to ride and just have a good conversation, but also to engage with the students and their family. So that was a really great opportunity this morning. Staff recognition, congratulations to Kelly, and I'm not going to destroy her last name at the high school for being recognized as a twenty twenty five Western Massachusetts Council Association School Counselor of the Year. So there are great things happening in the ARPS community. We do plan to highlight this on our social media pages and do some more, but I could not take the opportunity to talk about the great things in the region. More great news, again, very student-centered, our ARPS students represented ARPS at the junior district auditions at Westfield College. Fifteen students got into the junior districts ensembles with several receiving first-year positions, and I played first-year clarinet, so that is a big seat to sit in. You take the lead, and that means that our music leaders are doing what they need to do, our students are representing the region well. Thirty high school students got into the senior western division, western districts last month, with twenty seven receiving all-state recommendations. So again, great job, great work, our programs are working, our programs are flourishing, and our students are representing as well. One of the things that we're highlighting now as we continue to go through, Seth, it has reached out to teachers, to school principals, and is, again, the superintendent's update should always be able, what are the great things that are happening in our schools? And so we are looking at highlighting classrooms, and so we're talking about what's happening inside an ARPS classroom. And so at the middle school, social studies teacher, Mick O'Connor, teamed up with Amherst Historical Society, and they have been some great hands-on things. And of course, I can't find my notes because it's always someplace delved into something else. It's okay, it's here somewhere. And so. Yep. And so they were working on U S history curriculum and delving into the fact that they had a guest from lesson from third graders in Amherst and Pelham. The program tailored early U S history curriculum gives students a chance to examine local historical artifacts. And then in terms of the high school, thank you to Mr. Fable, who worked with his engineering students to take on and develop their own technological devices, and this is them pictured there. So engineering students were taking safety to the next level with Sarah, a revolutionary smart garment designed to monitor the health of the search and rescue personnel in real time. So this is really, you know, I don't get to be in every classroom, and neither does my team, but when we are invited or we're walking through, we want to make sure we highlight the greatness that we see in each one of our highlights. So this is something we, I hope to continue to do in each one of the updates moving forward. Upcoming events, the Listening Lounge, due to my schedule, that was scheduled for Monday, has been moved to Friday at four thirty, it's going to be held via Zoom. The information has been shared via Parent Square. We had a decent turnout last, last time, I said decent because I was happy that even one parent came. And so I asked that we come in, there is, again, we did share for the questions for this month, and I can't remember what the theme is, but we also have the four towns presentation. The high school has a production of The Curious Case of Watson Intelligence, and that starts December thirteenth, so twelve, thirteenth, and fourteenth at seven PM. Our band concert, our middle school band concert is on December eighteenth at seven PM, featuring yours truly to read two sentences, but I am excited. I did not get my clarinet in time, so I will not be playing, but I am going to narrate a portion of it, and so very excited about that. And then winter break, which I think all of the students are looking forward to, starts on December twenty third to January sixth, and I believe we have a half day, no, this is not the twenty third, it's actually the twenty? The twenty, the twentieth, and there's a half day on the twentieth. So that, yes, so definitely making sure that we enjoy ourselves, but come back safely to us on the seventh. And that is my wonderful, awesome update. Our high schoolers had a cake raffle where they made cakes, and I went in and I bid big money because I saw chocolate, and I won. So that was my cake that I graciously won, and I wanted to say thank you to everyone. It's been great in the region.
Thank you, Dr. Z. I wanted to add one thing to your events list, which is on December seventeenth, a week from tonight at seven PM, the high school band chorus and orchestra will be having concert at seven. Sure. Secondly, I want to say congratulations on surviving your first snow day. I feel like it's a thankless task and possibly a no-win, like there will be people upset no matter what decision you make, and so I, I'm, congratulations, and I'm glad that you survived.
Thank you.
And lastly, I wanted to say I was really excited to hear about the, the training or professional development for coaches. So thank you to Tanya, and thank you, Dr. Z, and thank you to Victoria and Georgia. I feel like I don't hear much about professional development for coaches, and, but they're such a big, I have a student athlete, and athletics is such a big part of students' lives, and for some students, it's like the reason they go to school that day so that they can compete that, that afternoon. So thank you for the support for the coaches.
Thank you. I think that one of the key things we have to, and you're right, there are students who go to school for athletics, there are students who go to school for music, there are students who go to school for art, and that's why it's very important for us to keep some of our our programs together and grounded into what we do, because that's what drives the student focus and academics, their interest. So if we're going to keep pushing their interests, we have to make sure we're offering those strong programs. It's up to me tonight. All right, now, now we can. All right. So in actuality, this was actually on one of my updates to do in October, but that meeting had run kind of late, and so we opted to cancel it before the superintendent's update. But just note that this is our most recent quarter one projections, and we are getting ready to close out quarter two. When we first talked about quarter one projections, and when we looked at in terms of quarter one report, not projections, quarter one report, because at that point it was projections, there are some areas, the region currently is at twenty-three point seven percent, as you can see, areas of concern, as you can see, the percent of the budget used is our special education program is in red, which is consistently in red, and we're trying to work on, on that. The descriptions are there on the bottom. Other than special education, central administration and facilities are all kind of trending a little bit higher. And so we're definitely looking at those for quarter two. One of the things that we def, that we did is we invoked a, I, I can't say it's a freeze, but it's kind of like a prioritization. And so individuals, when they submit for requisitions, they, we have a procurement action form where they justify and clearly talk about the importance of certain things that we're trying to procure, just so that we can keep track a whole and make it to the end of our year in a fiscally responsible state. But again, all areas are being monitored on a monthly basis so that we can determine when we can release that. And so it also is helping us to keep our documentation in line. Typical for salaries to track lower in quarter one, as most employees begin work in August. So, you know, you'll see in quarter two, salaries will probably take a bump up. Special education expenses that I talked are higher due to unfilled salary position, so it's requiring us to contract out services. Also, just making sure we have those compensatory services in place, and so that is driving up our costs in special education. Central administration expenses are typically fifty percent of quarter one, as we encumber purchase orders for the entire year during quarter one. So this is where we get in, like, are I ready, and different major expenses, curricular expenses, programmatic expenses are done now, and so it typically trends higher. However, there was our payroll audit, new software and higher attorney fees that also affected our central administration projection, well, where we are right now, causing us to be at a sixty-three percent. And then we announced, I talked about the budget restrictions already, and so I'm going to open up for as minimal questions as possible, but knowing that we're going to provide our quarter two update in time.
Hi, thank you for that. I was just wondering why the other insurance and benefits at seventy-seven percent are in green?
I'll have to get back to you on that question.
Thank you.
To make sure. And I think that that also comes in the fact that we pay that up ahead of time, like we normally pay it for the year now. That is our, like, liability insurance and everything, we pay, we pay that ahead, I just want to, but I want to confirm it.
So I have a question and a request or a suggestion. One, I didn't see any comment on the facilities. Why? Why that is in yellow, or why that is sixty-nine percent of the budget? If you know, great, if not, I can, I guess I can ask if Shannon's not watching the.
She is. So I have the answer for Deb's question already, thank you, Shannon. It is in green because we pay that, same thing I said, we pay the insurances bill completely upfront, so that's, that's where it is, and give me a minute, we'll get the facilities explanation. And I think, yep, same thing. So the facilities is higher due to our custodial services and costs and supplies, so that's why right now it's exceeding.
Okay. But it, but if it's in yellow, that indicates some degree of concern.
Correct.
All right. So my request or suggestion is that I would find it very helpful if there were standard footnotes about some of these expense accounts, because frankly, you know, we get these every quarter, every three months, and I forget what's in other programs, what's in student programs and support services. So for some of these categories that are not completely obvious, like food service, it'd be nice just to always have a note about what is included.
Okay, so you're asking us to shift the document to have a footnote around what's included in the sub, in the expense account?
Just for some, some, I mean, I can send a list, the ones that. Just for some of some, I mean, I can send a list, the ones that are a little bit opaque, at least to me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Me again? I'm gonna drink a sip of water. This is a skeleton version of our Four Towns. I think by now you know how it work. I presented it full version of last time and I went back and we gutted it and did it over. So I was like, we're not doing that again. We're just going to focus in on what it is that we are going to present and talk about that. So this is our Four Towns prep. Can you make that bigger? The bottom, the plus size, plus sign. All right. So next slide. We have a singular goal. Achieve alignment and consensus. It is unfair for us to leave this December meeting without a clear understanding of what we are truly planning for. And to be able to adequately prep and prepare our teachers, our staffing, our programming for next year. So our singular goal is to collaborate with the four towns to establish agreement on the FY25 base budget and FY26 assessment method to ensure that district can build a sustainable educational model that addresses the budget gap and serves students effectively. That's our goal. So this is just a recap of what we presented last time in September. And it was very early. I think I completely, I repeatedly said it's very early. It's very early. And again, we presented six scenarios. We are not presenting six scenarios again this time. I think most majority or half of the towns talked about scenario one and two. I think we are presenting the most three possible scenarios. But we are not going into this whole six scenario thing. I think it's an injustice to the children for us to leave that meeting and not have a clear direction as a school district as to how do we plan and what do we do moving forward. So our goal is to present them to push and to get come to a consensus. So what have we learned since September 28th, 2024? So our budget deficit, we have a deficit, yes. However, we are moving in the right direction. There's progress. And so our Hampshire County Retirement Assessment came in a lot less. We're looking at the FY25 organizational consolidation of staff and staff attrition. As I think next week I get to present my findings. And so talk about not solutions, but directions forward and how we're trying to consolidate staff positions. Definitely right now, based on what happened with Hampshire County, we're our deficit. And if we don't get the towns to agree or to to come to consensus, our deficit can be as low as 1.2 or can be as high as 2 million. So we like, we, we definitely need to come to a consensus so that we can know what we're planning for. I would love to walk out of there and be like very clear that we're coming out with a 1.2 deficit and we can plan from that moving forward. Additional persistent unknowns that we have is our healthcare costs. Right now, we're projecting a 13% increase. However, I think in the initial conversation, they had talked about 15%. And so everyone agreed to project at 13. We're not going to have that until February, late January, early February. So that consistently is an unknown that we're just planning for at 13%. Fingers crossed. I'm like, let them come in and be like, hey, 10%. I would be very happy. I'll be celebrating, honestly. Because 13% is a lot and that it just a little decrease would give us a little bit of ease in positioning. Transportation's cost, our RFP has been published. Our bids open January 15th with a 10% increase cap. And so again, this is an unknown with the fact that we're, we have budgeted a 10% increase, but we're not sure what we're going to receive. And that's why we're looking at all kinds of measures in terms of operationally to shift our transportation right now. How do we, how do we look at what's happening in terms of efficiency of our drivers? Efficiency of how do we use the contract that we have in place? And I'll talk about that some more when we talk about, you know, the strategies. And then our middle school, high school building consolidation. So at in September, we didn't hear back from Masbah yet around what's occurring. Since then, we have had the invitation for accelerated repair program for our middle school roof. I did reach out to the project manager and request a meeting to talk about what that's going to look like for the region to get some insight to help us determine whether or not we can still do the middle school, high school building consolidation. What are the next steps? So and what are the risks to that grant if we consolidate versus not? So I want to be able to present a very clear picture to the committee, but also to the towns around what it is that needs to be done. So once that meeting is, I think that meeting is tomorrow, then I'll have more more information around that. Next slide, I mean. So you have to zoom out a little bit so that, okay, thanks. All right. So this is our FY26 operating projections, round two. Circled in red is what our projected FY26 budget would be, 37 million, approximately 38 if you round up. However, this year, we are projecting a 6.4% increase. And so that is just where we are currently at. And I think that the numbers are coming in below that when we look at what everyone is projecting, the towns are projecting to send for it. Maybe. So that's why for me and for my team, our goal on Saturday is to have great conversation, but to walk out with a consensus because we need to plan for that number. And that increased talk, again, it looks at salaries year over year, our different contracts, the risk and benefits, you know, our insurances, our transportation costs as well. So. So the strategies, the strategic efficiencies that we're looking at in terms of closing the budget gap. We're looking at staffing optimization. We're looking at program review and redesign. This includes looking at our start times, looking at our schedules, looking at our implementation plans for different things that are happening at schools. I know that there was a whole research presented and things talked about in terms of students coming to school, high schoolers and their rhythms and everything. And then I'm also looking at the data that says our absenteeism isn't shifting in any direction with the later start time. It's actually really not, it's not getting better. So I'm trying, I have to balance that and talk about how that in turn is affecting our transportation costs and cost savings. And so I also want you to know that every week I receive a list of students approximately, let's say, I must say, no less than 50. No less than 50 who leave school early for sports. So these students leave, are dismissed early to play sports. And again, I'm all about the whole child. I am a proponent of it. But if the majority of the schools around us, like they're they're losing time. And so we've had discussions. I've asked the school leaders to present at the region to their staff, the proposed changes. Even a discussion in terms of the use of the flex back or even if it should continue. And so we're looking at the feedback from the teachers. Transportation cost savings, there is a cost savings that comes into it when we, once we fix our programming, the efficiency of how we run in term, even in the scheduling, because of the projected cuts, we are going to have to shift our schedules. We are going to have to shift how we run it to be able to sustain the staff, to educate our students with the staff that we would be able to sustain with the budget that we have. That makes sense. And a part of that too is our transportation cost because we may, with a shift in our times, we may be able to use our drivers and even overtime from our drivers costs less than it would for a five star bus. So we're looking at those types of budgetary conversations to determine how do we kind of fix that. We're also looking at the fact that we know that Leverna Shutsberry has buses and how do we, we wrote writing them into our RFP, but not so much that it affects our start time or our students arriving to the region on time, which it kind of has been. But we've worked a lot better in that regard together. So that's kind of been showing differences. But we kind of worked that into our RFP this year. Having discussion around what are alternative revenue streams and that goes into four, five and six. Sarah Best talked about the pool. I think we're looking at our procurement and operations in terms of how many purchase orders do we have an open purchase order? And then we don't use the whole thing or we're exceeding it. So kind of fixing our fiscal practices. And then our facilities management goes into alternative revenue streams, which is how much are we charging for our facilities? What are we doing? What does that look like? And even more so our deferred maintenance on our buildings, our custodial supplies and services. We had to call in a contractor, an emergency contractor to come in and fix the heating system. That person had to go up on the roof to replace this, these parts. The parts had to be rushed in. Like, we want to make sure that our schools function. We want to make sure that everything is there, but these are costs. And when they're emergency costs that we may not, that may have exceeded our contingency because of the placement of the item that needs to be repaired, we then have an exceeding cost and then what we budgeted for. So those are all of the strategic efficiencies that we're working on in terms of closing the budget gap. And I believe that's the end of what we're going to talk about for Four Towns.
Okay. Tillman.
Thanks for the presentation. On slide three, you said you weren't going to present six scenarios. But could you tell us what scenarios you're, what the parameters are of the scenarios that you're planning to show?
Sure. So let me get into my computer. The parameter, of course, the parameters are, one, we're having 6% in the base. And then at 4%. And I think that what we also were told by, or the projection my team was told was 2.5% or 3% from some towns. So we were also going that way. Yes.
Can I? May I suggest that we stop talking about the 6% base FY25? It, in the last Four Towns meeting, if I recall, the general the general consensus, maybe not everybody's consensus, was that what was voted for is the base. And we can take it from there. If a town does not agree with that base, they should think about what percentage they want to give this year to calibrate for whatever their number is in their mind. But my understanding is that it was voted for, which corresponds to 6%.
Okay.
The FY25 budget is a 6% increase over FY24, and that was voted for across all towns. End of story.
Okay. We'll do, we'll do that, Tillman.
So I think that's a reasonable starting point from all four towns perspective. It's not a done deal. But I think all stars are going to line up for that. Thank you to the town and finance committee for all their hard work in that area.
Did you have a?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I think that it's, it's been pretty much. I think there's been pretty much a consensus with the at least Amherst that we will be going with that scenario number. We'll support the 6% I, the 4%. That's, that's something that they have informally and pretty soon will formally embrace. Embrace that number. What is, a question I have was that on, in your operating projections, round two, you have total expenses of 37,541,375, which is a 2 million something less deficit. And is that correct? And that would be then correlate to a 6.4% increase if we were to cover that amount? Is that correct? And then, and then I look at that and then I go back up to scenario one and scenario two. And that number seems to be larger than those numbers up at scenario one and scenario number two. So, so the question is, which ones are we looking at here and what increases that represent?
So then the numbers in scenario one and two at the top were 30, the projected spending was 38 million, 475,061. The new projection is 37 million, 541,375. So it's less than than what we projected in September. That, that's first. The $2 million increase will have us at a 1.2 million deficit with 6% in the base and 4% increase.
How much of a deficit?
1, 1.2 million.
Is that scenario number one?
That's going to be what we present as scenario number one, yes.
Yeah, we will, we will, if, if everything goes, if all the towns agree with this, we will end up with a 1.2.
Yes, the new, the new projections, yes.
All right. So it, it would be really, really, really good to know the impact of what does that mean for the region, the 1.2 million in terms of cost reduction?
So we.
I mean, you know, are we talking about, well, put it this way. If it's 1.2 and we go back to what you're saying in terms of staff optimization, will that decrease that number or does staff optimization, is that a good way of saying staff cuts?
That, that's a good way of saying staff cuts and realignment of services, but more so staff. The, the issue that comes in is that with the 1.2, that we have to make cuts. And so what, what that does is, and why we haven't outlined what it is. And one of the things I want to present at the Four Towns, and it was on my mind to present this evening, but I, I didn't, was the definition that we are going to be working from in terms of staffing. And I think that individuals say student facing positions and they think about school based positions as student facing. In my definite, in my mindset, student facing is not a school based position. Student facing is the, the classroom teacher, the para educator, the, the person that is required for to facilitate clear learning consistently, right? And so I want to avoid as much as possible the student facing positions being the ones that are cut. And look at how do we adequately optimize the staffing that we have without really impacting the programming at the region. I, I, I can't say that it will mean a no, no teacher, no one in the teacher category or no one in the para educator category experiences a cut. I don't think that we should impact their whole livelihood. It might be a reduction in time. But those are all things that we are trying to walk through. The issue that comes in is that as we continue to play with numbers versus clearly have a number to plan from, that's where we end up in the, in the pushback because if we have a clear commitment and consensus from the towns and we're able to plan accordingly, then we can clearly tell you what the impact to the region would be.
The other thing is, and the last thing I want to say is that does this number in terms of deficit include the unknowns or the unknown knowns? For instance, transportation, contract negotiations, et cetera. Does it include that?
Yes, it, it includes estimated, what I, I think what I said was that in earlier in the slides, I think it's this slide above it with a persistent unknowns. We projected our healthcare at 13%. That's in there. So if the healthcare comes in below 13%, that would be money that would come back. I think we could kind of play with a little bit. Our transportation costs, we projected out at 10% increase cap in there. And we, we have been looking at different percentages for APA negotiations. Um, and we, we have been looking at different percentages for APA negotiations.
Question and a comment. Uh, so at the financial indicators meeting last month in this room, Amherst, uh, town manager indicated that we could, at least for the moment, assume a three percent increase. So is that something you are going to model?
Yes, so we had, we will have two scenarios now. Uh, we had six percent increase with four per, six percent base with four percent increase and six percent base with three percent increase.
Thank you. The other, the, the comment is that, um, it'd be wonderful if we could have consensus from four towns in the clear direction. But nothing is certain until those town meeting or town council votes. You know, so. Yeah, they can't commit. I mean, it's my understanding, they cannot commit to anything. They'll, each, each person can give his or her opinion, but, um, and I, and I hope there's uh, hope the sentiments are, you know, line up the way we want. But I don't think there can, we can expect commitments.
So I at least would like us to have a conversation around when we disperse in a room. This is what I'm gonna go back to my town and council and everyone and push for. Um, I think that for, realistically, we probably won't have anything until January, right? But they need to be aware of, everyone is saying, we value the schools, we value education, we value the schools, we value education. We value the schools, we value education. And then education gets the short end of the stick, right? And so I think that it's, it's very, very. Realistically, I don't think, I didn't, I do, I know that there is a process to getting that commitment. What I feel needs to happen though, is that everyone needs to leave that room and say, we are going to go back and fight for this to, to occur this way. They, like, if we can get that consensus, that would be greatly appreciated. But we cannot, one, we have contractual obligations in terms of when do I have to notify individuals if they're going to be restricted or not? Then we also have to think about the fact that, why is it fair for a school district to be planning in June and July? For how they're going to operate in August, so, or September. So it really, it, it behooves everyone to understand how true educational platforms, like, systems work. Is that for the new school year, twenty twenty-six, that's what my mindset is set at in January. January, I am already planning for school year twenty twenty-six. That is where my team needs to be, school year twenty twenty-six. That is where they need to set their mindset forward, what programs we're going to do, what is that going to look like? So that when it comes down to it, at the end of the year, everyone knows where they're going to be, how we're going to move, what's going to happen. I understand that there's budgetary constraints, but we would need a consensus, consensus and agreement. Even if it is, we are going to go back and have these conversations with our towns and push for this. That needs to be said so that we can adequately plan and then turn around and present the budgets to everyone else in a timely fashion.
Yeah, building on what Sarah said about Amherst. I, I, I think it's not just that they can't commit, it's that they simply won't. I, I think we should expect that the Amherst Town Council won't provide any consensus or any agreement amongst the town council on, on anything. You might be able to get individual counselors to say, yes, I will fight for this. But I think, I just, I just don't think that's how they operate and from what I've seen of how they operate and from, from pa- past four towns meetings. I, I just, I'm not expecting, I just, I think it's unrealistic to expect Amherst to make any sort of decision or say how they're leaning. It seems like the other towns are able to, to, as a group, say, this is how we're leaning and Amherst simply, I think they will refuse to do so. Again, you might be able to get individual counselors to say that they'll push for it, but I, I just, I don't think, I think it's unreasonable to expect consensus from Amherst. Um, so that's, that's the one big thing. But this, a smaller thing is, can we look at slide three of the presentation? Oh, no, sorry, not slide three, slide, um, five. There, the, um, I just, it took me a minute to figure out how to read it. The, um, the column labels are cut off. Um, so it's, it's. I just wanted to point out that, um, the, the four actual columns are, are, are actual past four years. And then the budget column is budget for fiscal twenty-five, right? The projected column is projected for fiscal twenty-six. And the last column says decrease, but I think it's supposed to say.
It was the increase and.
Yeah, so it looks like that column is a decrease, but that, but because those numbers are all positive, that's just the difference between the projected twenty-six and the budget twenty-five. So that two point two is not the deficit. That two point two million at the bottom is the increase of fiscal twenty-six versus fiscal twenty-five.
I'll, I'll fix it and re-upload it to board.
Thank you.
Microphone. So the first thing I'm thinking is just that I fully agree with Tillman. But I don't think it's like a matter of agreement or not. Legally, three or, three of the four towns voted for the six percent, right? And so that is the base. So I think that continuing to put forward this idea to Amherst, like, oh, we're gonna model your feelings. That's fine, but feelings aren't, you know, sort of part of the picture here because they voted for it and three of four towns decided on that, right? And I wanna remind everyone that this school committee voted for eight percent and we compromised on six, right? I would love for one of those models to show what it would be to fully fund our schools. Not just starting from the assumption of cuts. So that's my first thing. The second thing is, I just wanna, um, add some context to the data around early start times. Because this school district was one of the latest school districts you may ever hear of in returning from COVID. And so we returned with our seventh to twelfth graders in May of twenty twenty-one to school in person. And then the later start times started that August, so. Um, and I'm not sure, I feel like during COVID, we also had an adapted schedule that started later, so. Um, but only for that COVID year, right? Um, so I think to find comparative data, you probably have to go to like twenty nineteen. But then to do that, you're making false comparisons, I believe, cuz you gotta figure in all those habits that changed over COVID. Um, so I just wanna put forward the idea that it's possible that our attendance could get worse. I work in schools there, they go to school at seven forty-five and I know many students don't show up for those first blocks or two. And so, I mean, just wanna like provide that information. I know the later start times have a lot of, um, folks behind them. And then there's other folks, yeah, who have concerns. So I don't think the community's all together, but I know you will get a lot of pushback with that. And the very last thing I wanted to look at was in these slides, um, with special education. You have budgeted there an increase that would bring it to one point four eight million, right? But then you just presented to us that, um, that we've already spent almost that much for this year in quarter one. So I, before we would vote on anything like this, you know, if we keep going at our pace, we'll be at four hundred percent in special ed. So what would cuts look like realistically? I understand some of that circuit breaker and so we'll see some of that back. But what would the cuts look like for special ed if we were gonna go to this budget that you're talking about? I think that's something we should be honest about upfront.
Oh, I, I, I agree with you. I think that, just, just so you're aware, I, I don't shy away from pushback and I think there's gonna be pushback regardless. Anything, anything that's done, change the start time, change the schedule, special education, there's going to be pushback regardless. Somebody's not going to be happy and so I'm fully prepared for that. Um, that's one. Two. There, there, and I, I can't wait till next week. But there, there is a series of things that we need to take into consideration when we think about special education. Um, one of the things that needs, needs to be talked about is the use of our one, one-to-ones. Um, that's one. Two, we do have a, a, it's hard to budget special education. I'm not even kidding. As you can see, if you go back to the, and the first, 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 first column, special education actually used one point eight million. So it's twenty-six, twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-one. FY twenty-one, at the end of that year, one point eight million. FY twenty-two, I don't know, maybe that, that, I think that's around the COVID time. Um, and then the following year, one point six, and then the following year, two million. Like, it's trending very high at, every time we look at the actuals. And then you see that, like, for FY twenty-five, it was budgeted at one point one. And so there are critical things that we're not taking into consideration when it comes to the programming in special education and we really have to delve deeply into it. One of the things that I asked the team to look at for me is, um, there's like DESI guidance, there's different guidance. There's research that talks about the over-dependence of students on one-to-one, um, supports and the impact in terms of the lack of independence and preparation for life. Like, that's what we're supposed to prepare our students for. And my thing is, give our students what they need. If our children need one-to-one, then they need one-to-one, but equity is not equality. And so we need to make sure that we're not just giving them a, a support because we think that's what they need. We need to give them the support that they need. And the big movement on equity actually started under IDA and special education. Like, I, I, I remember going to a training and there was a picture of four individuals at a baseball game trying to look over the, 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 the fence. And they show equ- equally, if you give them all the same thing, everyone's not going to be able to see the game. And I think that what's happening here is we have a standard menu that a lot of individuals are pulling from. Um, and so we need to be mindful about those services and we need to do a deeper delve into our special education services. Um, I know the director administrator will say that I have been pushing that conversation, um, because we do. We do, and honestly, our whole, but people move to our district just for our special education services because they know we are going to give their students a one-to-one or we are going to do these things. And that speaks volumes to the great work that we have happening within our schools, but can we fiscally support it? I, I don't have an answer to that. So we are projecting out as best as we can, Bridgette. But that, but every year it seems to exceed, um, more so. I know the team is working right now to see our out-of-district placements, to see who can return back. Um, we're looking at our Summit Academy, which is a very strong program. Again, a diamond, like, like a gem, very small, their students come in, they're tuitioned in. But then we're seeing in the budget where we're affecting the revolving fund on that as well. So there's different conversations that we're having, um, and we're looking at the team. Um, everything that we've done with the budget so far, from since the four towns meeting, the administrators have been in budgetary meetings and conversations. Um, so we have been looking around these things. I'm trying, my pur- my purpose is to make sure we have good programming for our students and that as many student-facing jobs can be saved.
I wanted to ask a little bit about, um, scheduling. Um, there was a letter that was written to the school committee asking us to support a student project um, that supports a bill to require schools to start at nine AM and asking if, because we've already done it, whether we would support such a bill. Um, but what I wanna know is, how much data do we? And apparently the data's all messy because of COVID and when we started it. Um, but I think, you know, we need to look at more than just absenteeism and, um, early release or early dismissal.
Our MCAS data, sure.
But also, yes, MCAS and then tardiness. And, um, because part of the re, part of the rationale for starting at nine is that older teens' brains function better after nine. And so allowing them to sleep in a little bit and come to school at nine, being fully prepar- more prepared to actually learn, um, after a decent night's sleep and waking up a little bit later, in theory, allows them to learn better. So the question is, are they actually learning better with a later start time or is that just a myth? And so I think it would be really helpful both to decide whether to support this bill but also for, in our deliberations about what we're trying to do in the next year to, um, know whether that early, that later start date has had any impact on student learning and, um, or absenteeism or tardy, tardies. And, and then also, um, if, you know, when we had the earlier start date, did we never release students early for, for sports? Is that something that only started once we had the later start date in order to have them be able to participate in sports at the same time as they used to or whatever?
I think my understanding about that is, they, they, there was no need for early release because all of the schools ended at, around the same time, so they, they were able to attend.
Just so everyone knows, I'm trying to make sure everyone gets to speak before, before it happens again. So William and I do have Tillman Dev and Erv all on the list.
I was just gonna say that I would welcome. I was just gonna say that I know, like, there's probably families on different ends of start times. Um, and I know for my family, an earlier start time would be more beneficial, so I'm sure there's two sides to every story. Uh, but I could speak from sports related for my family is that, you know, my child had to be released and only took three classes instead of four classes because of her goals, uh, in the sports world. And for that, she had to not take a whole entire class for two years in high school. You know, I guess it was a year and a half after they changed the start time, she lost a whole period, uh, because of what she wants to do in sports. So I do think it does impact kids, um, having the later start time.
You know, it is true that, uh, at the four towns meeting, you can, um, you can't, there's no, uh, ability for us to come out. Whoop, is it? There's no ability for us to come out and for the town council, say for Amherst, to come out and say, yeah, we support this because they would have to vote on it. However, and I would encourage, I'm not gonna be there cuz I'll be traveling, our members who will be at the four towns meeting. My assumption is that there will be a quorum of council members there, town council, that you avail yourselves of asking them for their support and how many of them support what I would consider to be scenario number two or scenario one or, one or two. The one with the one point two deficit. How many of them will support that in terms of what that means for our base and budget going forward? There's nothing wrong with asking that question, uh, to get some certainty on our part. I believe that, that the support is already there. You just need to ask, but I, I believe, uh, from everything that I've known, from everyone that I've talked to, that support is already there.
So I, I noticed that in the slides, there's something really spectacular in there already that I felt you didn't emphasize enough. Because in slide three, the projection, which I think was a level services budget, was thirty-eight point four seven five million. Top line. And on slide five, the s- the circled number is thirty-seven point five four, which means that you and your team have already figured out how to take two point five percent of the budget.
Right.
And I think this is really important to emphasize because one of the misconceptions that the towns may have is that they think the schools are always asking for more and never making hard decisions and cuts. And, you know, it's always comes out to be six percent and it's always, you know, more than they, they want. So, um, in terms of the storyline, I think, and, and the point that, uh, somebody made about trying to get the commitment early is that we're converging. You have done a, a great step in direction of where the towns want you to be. And, you know, we encourage towns to take a step towards you. And presumably, there might be other opportunities that you discovered where you can shave off a little bit and they can give a little more of a conversion something. Um, I do wanna, uh, Um, I do wanna, uh, agree with Bridget's suggestion that there should be at least one. That the third scenario should be more than the four percent of the baseline, which we will never refer to again as that percentage. That would, you know, ba- basically be the end of cuts or close to the, you know, what you have in that thirty seven point five that you have gotten to. Right? And tha- that's basically the, the ideal ask and we understand that that may not be possible, but just to know what that number is, is it six percent? Six point four? Yeah, six point four. So maybe there should be a six percent scenario and saying, this would, you know, limit any further significant cuts. And we could be done with that. Thank you.
Hi, um. There's been a lot of conversation. Um, so I have three topics, but I'm gonna hit them really quick. Uh, the one is the start time. Impacts, these are complex systems, as you know, the start time impacts the block schedule, which was a flex block. And it was also a plus block. So there's a lot of pieces and COVID cannot be separated out from that block schedule in particular. The relevance is, instead of a seven drop one, you have four classes, but at the same time. Those tasks come fast and furious when you have a year of material in one semester and. From my personal experience, every time I turn around, there's, there's an assessment. So that's, that's all I'm gonna say about that. Um, for four towns. I, you know, I think it'd be great to get guidance on what it would take. From the data at the end of January to get the towns up to four percent. So. All my conversations with town officials indicate they will not have that information until the end of January. But we will. One of the big pieces that they're looking at is what the governor's proposed budget will be. And that will be at the beginning of January. So we will have some insight. Into what kind of wiggle room they have in their budget if they can tell us. What, what kind of space they're looking to create at the end of January, if that makes any sense. I can refine that. Um, and then the last part of four towns is. It is important to my town that, um. Scenarios, including our assessment method.
They do.
Be presented and not all the way up to the guardrails.
They, they, they do.
Okay.
They include, so the way how we're presenting it this year, and Shannon is going to be taking the lead on that conversation. Is we're showing the comparative for each scenario that we have. Sorry, for each scenario that we have, we're showing the, the comparative of the statutory method versus the assessments, like, what we have. If it's, every town gives a three percent versus what is supposed to be statutorily.
But statutory is different from the agreed upon assessment method.
Right, so there's three.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, thank you. And then the last part is. I've been telling everyone that we're looking under all rocks. Uh, Senator Comaford is soliciting information. She's planning on putting in a piece of legislation for K through twelve funding. Um, she's mindful of the fact that this area of the state was very supportive of the fair share amendment. K through twelve saw some, but not a lot of that money. It's not already earmarked for the projects that had previously been. So, um, you or we as a committee could tell her the kinds of relief that we're looking for immediate relief in the budget. Lots of people talk about chapter seventy, that's way off. But we can, can look to the state to. Fully fund transportation. Take another look at circuit breaker, take another look at, um, the actual. Attendance rate of special education students rather than some arbitrary thing they created. Um, there, there are places in our budget, in particular special ed transportation. That she might be willing to push on if we could. Articulate that. Thank you for that. So that's, um, and, and we certainly can activate. This, this committee and our towns and our community. To follow through on these like we did with the Mass Promise Initiative. Okay. Sure. Seeing the presence of a quorum of the Amherst School Committee, I call the Amherst School Committee to order at eight thirty one. Uh, seeing the presence of a quorum for a poem, I call our meeting to order at eight thirty seven PM. Oh, sorry, at eight thirty one PM.
Okay, so for our, uh, the first item that was listed on our joint meetings was the district calendar, which the union has requested that we put off to our. Next meeting. Uh, so next up is our policies.
Naivi, can you put the policies up for me? So we got a, um.
Oh, I can do that.
Okay. So we had a memo from, um, council saying that we needed to update some policies on the new. The Title IX revisions that were a while ago, anyway. So in that. What they suggested we do is that we, um, update the ACE policy. We update the AC policy, and then we eliminate. The ACC. The ACA policy. So it's a little confusing, um, if we look, if we can look at policy, the first one, the ACE policy. Um, I did, you know, on board docs is the new proposed one and then also a copy of the old one. The only additions that they wanted us to make to ACE according to the council was the, um, make reference to the grievance procedures. So really, all that's been added to this policy is under students, the student section in the second paragraph. It has, uh, the sentence begins with additionally. That is new, and then in the grievance, there are, um, the words have been switched to talk about the grievance procedures that we have. So it's really not major differences, it's just a few tweaks in words. Yes. This was more derived from council than it was directly from us. So that might be from the Title IX legal words, I'm not sure. I can look at that and see. Go ahead.
Yeah, I had, I noted the same thing for using caregivers else in other policies, and we have the freedom to do that here. I would encourage it, but maybe it's not. Not a good idea. But my question is about grievance because my only experience with that. Is in terms of a union. So are we using that word for the process that caregivers and students would also follow? Or, or is grievance here specifically something an employee?
It's to follow the district's grievance procedures, I believe.
But they apply both to students and caregivers?
Yes, they should, yes.
So I wanted to chime in that when, um, individuals have agree, I, I think that the establishment of the policy. Will be put in place and then it's for me and my team to determine what the procedural guidelines would be. Which would mean that if there, if there is an, uh, issue where they are upset or they want to grieve it, then we'll put those policies as to include an appeals process. In there if they're, if they're upset.
Yeah, it would be part of your procedures, not our policies.
Right, no, it's just, I think in other policies maybe, or maybe other documents, not a policy, but we've talked about complaints. So this just sounds like it's something different, and maybe it isn't, and maybe it's the required word, so.
Yeah, I think it comes from the Title IX stuff. We have to have the grievance procedures. And so that's why those words were changed. Any other comments on, um, policy ACE?
Tillman.
I'm doing a quick web search. There is a difference between a guardian and a caregiver, um, by mass law, and so we should probably use the language provided to us by council.
Thank you. Any other comments? We will move on to policy AC. Hopefully you'll have time to look over these. We did not make any changes to what council presented to us. And so this is straight from council. Sarah Marshall.
This is a complete overhaul evidently. The modified one. So, um, my first comment is that this, I believe this is going to pertain to all three districts, so all three districts should be mentioned in that opening sentence. Actually, every time, it's twice in this, uh, first paragraph. And then in the third paragraph, so just to check that all three paragraphs are, um, mentioned. But I wonder, I'm a little puzzled by the phrase, all designated youth groups. To me, that means like a church youth group. What is a youth group? This is, do you know?
We had a lot of discussion on that. Anna, do you want to speak to it?
This is, um, related to a lawsuit filed by the Boy Scouts of America and their right to use public property. And so it is now written that youth groups to include Boy Scouts and other youth groups. That's why it has to say that.
But who designates them? I mean, does the district designate a group to be a youth group versus elsewhere in law?
Pre- it's was verbiage from law. We had, we had a very large discussion, very large on this, um, and it, that is what it is.
Can I give my last one?
Sure.
Okay, um, so in the next to last paragraph. Um, the first long sentence, uh, mentions reports of discrimination, harassment and retaliation. And I would say against the protected classes, but in any case, going on in the, um, subsequent sentences. I think, like, not all the same. It's not always just, uh, discrimination, harassment and retaliation. Sometimes it's just discrimination, so. Just make sure that all three are included, if all three are meant. But if an individual is interested in filing a complaint that they have been discriminated against. But discriminated, harassed or retaliated against. It's just singling out one of those three categories.
Thank you. Any other comments on policy AC or any other questions, Bridget?
Not the happiest comment, but, um, my understanding is that we're undergoing this because of the Title IX changes and. It's possible that we'll be undergoing, it's very likely we'll be undergoing a new set of Title IX changes. And so then I'm wondering. If some of these things at that point would become illegal and then to save duplication of efforts, if we shouldn't like hear this a little later. Even though I will say I agree with all the changes here within.
I did ask that and we decided we should move forward with this, and then we will make changes as needed in the future. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. And then you can, um, look at the, we're not going to discuss them tonight, but if we decide after the second read to vote these two policies. We would be looking at not having retiring, um, policy ACC, which is specific to Pelham. Um, and we would be retiring policy ACA, uh, those two policies. And yes, hold on, one second, hold on. I was just gonna say that, um, council said to eliminate current policy ACA as it's redundant with the new nondiscrimination policy AC that we just talked about. Um, and will be addressed through the grievance procedures. Uh, eliminate current policy ACC as it's redundant with the new nondiscrimination policy AC and will be addressed through the grievance procedures. So that was what the council suggested, we eliminate those two policies. So we will, can discuss those now if you want to, but we also want, we will not. Get rid of them until after we adopt the other two. Go ahead.
Kind of a point of order about the ACC policy. If it's just a Pelham policy, then it's not the business of the joint committee. It, you know, I'm elected by Amherst people. I don't decide whether Pelham should have, remove its policy or not.
We, we could vote, Pelham could vote right now just on the Pelham thing and even though Amherst people are sitting here, because we're both in session.
True, and that'll be the case the next time, because presumably you won't. You're not gonna do that now because we don't have a new policy in place.
Correct, but my thought is when we do have a new policy in place, that the three of us amongst all of us could vote all that. At the same time. Thank you.
Great, chairs. Would you like to adjourn your meetings?
Yes, uh, can I have a motion to adjourn the Amherst School Committee?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, raise your hand? Thank you, it's unanimous.
I move to adjourn the Pelham School Committee. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? We are adjourned.
Excellent.
I call to order Union Twenty Six, as I see we have a quorum of Union Twenty Six.
Nope, we're in order. You gotta.
So Union Twenty Six, uh, is in, uh, session starting at eight forty three.
All right, let's see. The Amherst Pelham Regional School Committee will now consider entering executive session in accordance with open meeting law M A G L C thirty A, section twenty one A. To conduct strategy sessions in preparations for negotiations with non-union personnel superintendent Dr. E. Ziyamora Herman. Or conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair, so declares. And I do declare with no intent to return to open session.
Second.
Thank you, Jennifer. Uh, Deb.
Yes.
Dara.
Yes.
Bridget.
Yes.
Uh, Jennifer.
Yes.
William.
Yes.
Sarah Bass, yes. Irv.
Yes.
Tillman.
Yes.
Anna.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
The Union Twenty Six School Committee will now consider entering executive session in accordance with open meeting law. M A G L C thirty A, section twenty one A, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. Superintendent Dr. E. Ziyamora Herman are to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contracted negotiations with non-union personnel. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares with no intent to return to open session.
Second.
Thank you. Um, Margaret.
Yes.
Irv.
Yes.
Sarah Bass.
Yes.
William, yes. Bridget.
Yes.
Sarah Marshall.
Yes.
So we're in executive session.
Thank you all very much. Thank you again to the Town of Amherst for letting us use their spaces.